Recording in progress.
Also, we're at the regular meeting of the Riedel City Council. Roll call, please.
Mayor Barnes?
Here.
Mayor Lieutenant Carter?
Here.
Councilmember Orr?
Here.
Councilmember Wilson?
Here.
Councilmember Woodall?
We came out of closed session with nothing to report out. No actions taken. And now can we stand for the pledge of allegiance? Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Public presentations. This is the time for persons who wish to address the council on matters not on this agenda and over which the council has jurisdiction. As such, a dialogue with the council or its staff is not allowed under the Ralph Lum Brown Act. Items requiring council actions that are listed on this agenda may be placed on the next regular agenda for consideration if the council directs, unless a finding is made by at least two-thirds of the council that the item came up after the agenda was posted and is of an urgency nature requiring immediate action. Please limit comments to a maximum of three minutes. What you got, Rich?
Nothing. It's not the end, probably.
Any emails, sir?
No.
Then we will close public presentations and move to the consent calendar. Is there anyone who would like to remove an item from the consent calendar? No. Okay. Then is there a motion to accept the consent calendar?
So, votes.
We have a motion. Is there a second? Sorry. Do we have a motion and a second?
Hillary.
Motion carries five zero. Now we'll move on to city manager and staff updates, page twenty-three in our packets. City manager.
Thank you, Mayor Barnes. I'm with the council. I just want to thank Derek Taylor and Sunshine Kelly for getting the corning generator installed. Still a couple little components to put together, like the hot water heater and whatnot. But that was the corning generator. Now, the waste water treatment plant was damaged during the earthquake, and it is just another example of some of the repair work that is ongoing will continue to be ongoing. Also, you may have noticed that Seventy Wildwood Avenue, AKA Mingo's, has completed their facade projects, and that was also a project in the facade improvement project. So, we had three total facade improvement projects over the course of the last two fiscal years or year and a half, and that will be the final one for round one. So, the next phase for that is to go back through the grant guidelines and come back to the council to see if we want to offer round two in a modified form or a different type of system. So, the program certainly, we were hoping to get more properties involved, and certainly there were others that never took advantage of the program and did their own enhancements on their own. But we certainly want to look at it and if there were reasons that people were not able to participate to see if we can get round two to be more applicable for those needs. Staff is continuing to review and monitor plans for cannabis cultivation, expansion, both in our business park, the Hubble Riedel Business Park, and the Dismore Plateau. We do have several new developments that could be online by the end of 2024, and these are pretty substantive and interesting projects that we're very excited to be watching. Staff will also be distributing an EVM postcard through USPS over the Thanksgiving holiday weekends. Of course, the mail will probably be very slow, but we want to advise residents to avoid disposing of fats, oils, or grease into the sewer system. We do have quite a bit of that material in the system which causes a significant problem. And then on January twenty-third, 2024, will be the homelessness point-in-time count that annually has been occurring for about three or four years. And the city staff has been pretty acutely or significantly involved in those point-in-time counts. But we certainly want to get interested volunteers to participate in that. It's a counting-wide point-in-time count where folks go using an app on their phone, identify individuals experiencing homelessness all at the same time across the county, and then that gets placed into a larger statistical database to kind of gauge what's going on, not just in Humboldt County actually, but statewide. So, anybody interested in participating in that count, it does start a little early at 6:00 a.m., but if anybody is interested in participating in that, feel free to contact me. With that, unless there's any other questions, I'm happy to try to answer questions from the council.
Thank you, city manager, and I thank you too for...
Mayor Lieutenant? Thank you also to Derek and Sunshine and the control. Sorry, better place, yeah.
Corning generator?
Yes.
Yes, for mixed modifications.
Like it's less dangerous now.
Correct.
And then thank you about the fats, oils, and greases. I think that is a good thing to put out there. Should we put it on the sign?
We should, yeah.
We should put it on the sign. Okay. All right. That's it. Thank you.
Councilmember Will? Just thank everybody. Lot's been lot going on, and thanks for the work. Every... Well, you know, I drive around a lot, and they're always out doing something. I mean, I've seen them all over the city, which is a good sign. I like it. But thank you, guys. And thank you. You're?
No questions for me.
Councilmember Wilson?
No questions.
And I have no questions, but thanks to you had some cones. They were very helpful. The cops were driving around on Saturday and saw us out there at the Christmas tree, and we were having some really whiz-by drivers. So, I called up. I said, you know, you guys have some cones or flares, and they brought some down. I really appreciated it. It really actually helped.
Yeah.
Because you just had that orange cone, and you just kind of do like this, and people kind of respond to the orange cone. So, that was nice. I appreciate that.
You're welcome.
Yeah. And are there any emails or hands raised? Anything? Okay. Then thank you to staff for everything. And we will close that session and move on to annual financial report for fiscal year 2022-23, page twenty-nine in our packets. I think that's you, Travis. I think you're on.
I am very happy to turn this over.
City manager? Good evening, Mayor Barnes and members of the city council. The annual financial report summarizes and analyzes on financial performance of the city for fiscal year 2022-2023. Details of the report describe revenues and expenditures incurred during the fiscal year and explains material differences between the values and adjusted budget. Financial reserves and fund balances are also updated in the termus of the fiscal year. This report was created using un-audited financials as of June thirtieth, 2023. The official audit will be finalized in early 2024. The city has three main fund types in which its finances are consolidated within. The general fund, enterprise funds consisting of sewer, in-water, and special revenue funds. Overall, city revenues exceeded expenses by just over $44,000. This is principally due to the remainder of the city's ARPA revenue reported that yet to be expended at a sum of $400,000. This slide compares actual revenues and expenses to the budgeted amounts for major funds. Revenue amongst major funds were a 3.5% higher than estimated. Water and sewer recorded increased revenues in part to an increase in grant-funded sewer studies and reimbursement received from claims associated with the December 2022 earthquake. Total expenditures among the major funds were under budget by less than 1%. General fund expenditures were lower than budgeted by 14%, primarily due to budgeted capital projects not completed. Increases in water and sewer expenditures were attributed to both emergency and ongoing earthquake expenditures. Fund balances for the city totaled over $10.1 million at the end of the fiscal year, a decrease of approximately 6%. The city expects total fund balances to decrease over the current fiscal year as ARPA revenues are expended and large grant projects are completed. General fund revenue were roughly 3% less than budgeted. Retail sales tax revenues were down over 30% from budgeted estimates and $125,000 year-over-year. This issue is not localized to just Riedel. The state of California is seeing across-the-board decreases in sales tax revenues, due in large part to a sluggish California economy, higher-than-anticipated interest rates, and unwavering inflationary concerns. The city recorded higher-than-anticipated cannabis revenues, 20% over budgeted amounts, along with reimbursements from the state and Cal OES for claims submitted for specific earthquake expenses included in the other revenue section. City major fund revenues were $1.39 million for fiscal year 2022-23. The property taxes and the vehicle license fees and retail sales tax bringing in over $471,000 and $563,000 respectively. General fund expenditures were $1.86 million or $316,000 under budget due to capital projects budgeted and not completed and generally lower department spending. General government department recorded expenses $82,556 over budget. This was due to the general government department absorbing a large portion of the earthquake expenses allocated to the general fund. Street revenues were more than budgeted by 7% primarily due to higher actual TDA revenues received. Actual expenditure were 11% below budget due to capital projects not completed. The street funds consist of gas tax, SB-run road maintenance, TDA funds, and RSTP revenues and expenditures. Actual revenues for the sewer enterprise fund were 4% more than budgeted, with expenditures 14% higher than the budgeted allocation. This variance has contributed to expenses directly attributed to the earthquake along with increased energy costs for the sewer department. The sewer fund balance decreased by $276,000 or 17% less than the estimated at the time of the 2022-23 budget development. Capital revenues for the water enterprise fund were 8% more than budgeted, with expenditures 5% more than budgeted. The variance in water capital fund 062 is directly related to emergency earthquake expenditures, while the water operations were mainly lower due to salary savings due to lax staffing during the first half of the year. Water fund balances decreased by 19% more than estimated at the time of the 2022-23 budget development. Other major funds included in the special revenue fund include the building fund, the supplemental law enforcement services fund, and the CDVG fund. The building fund receives a general fund transfer annually to cover excess expenditures over revenues. The supplemental law enforcement services fund is used to supplement law enforcement services such as salary and benefit costs. The CDVG fund had a balance of $571,688. These funds are currently under contract with the county of Humboldt to offer loans to qualified applicants impacted by the 2022 earthquake disaster. A new section of the annual financial report is the financial impact of the December 2022 earthquake disaster. The city is working together with our partners at Cal OES to file claims for reimbursement related to earthquake damages in the community. The city is entitled to a 75% reimbursement for qualified expenses with the opportunity to request 100% reimbursement on a project per project basis. During fiscal year 2022-23, the city incurred over $562,000 in earthquake-related expenditure, split between the general fund, 19%, sewer, 54%, and the water enterprise fund, a 27%. Out of these items, the city has submitted reimbursement claims for six items and has received reimbursement for three in the amount of over $177,000. The master earthquake list provides... Excuse me, the last word. The master earthquake list of projects has a cost estimate of nearly $36 million. The city's 25% cost share and no additional reimbursement are grand will be just under $9 million. I'd like to thank you for your time this evening, and I'd be happy to answer any questions if the council may have.
Thank you very much, Travis. Earthquake slide. Information, Mayor. We're calling the council. Councilmember Wilson?
You know, the sales tax difference, or it's down by about... Is that due to, I think you said it, interest, and it is not interest rates, but what is... Is that including the... We have the other major on top of that, the three-quarter percent. Are we currently receiving that three-quarters percent?
Still 1% at this point. It will go to three-quarters percent of 2024 when the measure is enacted.
Do you hear any word?
Yeah. This has more so to do with it was budgeted quite high and also in addition to just the economic climate of the sales tax revenues were lower across the state in general. So, Riedel is certainly not alone in this predicament. Cities and towns across the state of California are seeing decreases. The state of California itself saw a 30% reduction in their sales tax. And so, this is just a factor that has, or have many factors, including inflation, not allowing the spending power of people in the community to spend on goods and for the city to collect those tax revenues. Also, just an increase in inflation, the interest rate, these are all factors that contribute to lower spending, and so that's a major contributing factor to it.
Thank you.
Thank you, councilmember Orr.
That actually answered my question, though.
Thank you, councilmember Will. On the earthquake impacts, when they're picking up 75 and leaving 25, and we might be able to pick up the 25%, how long can those trickle in? I mean, can we, four years from now, be getting refunds?
I think so. You know, we try to take care of each list of items one at a time and close them out. So, we, once we complete a project, we'll submit for reimbursement, and once the project's approved by the state, then we'll get that 75% return.
Okay, so could they, like, wow?
After that, the city manager has been reaching out to Cal OES and the stakeholders and requesting that additional 100%. And so, you know, this time, we don't know when that determination would come through, and we've had meetings with Cal OES reps. They have said they don't have an answer as well. So, you know, it's hard to predict, but we're going to continue to reach out and continue to follow up and try to, you know, get every bit of reimbursement that we can because the liability to the city is, I mean, you can see quite far. It'll definitely take some creative thinking to continue to address it.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Mayor Lieutenant?
I have no questions, but thank you, Travis. I always appreciate your budget presentations. They are easy to understand, and I'm just glad it's not me working with all those... Thank you for doing that, friend. That's it.
Thank you as well, and I agree with Mayor Lieutenant. I actually started out as an accounting major.
Oh, no.
I'm so glad. Let it go. Move down the hazardous ways. Somehow it's got... Thank you so much, Travis. Are there any questions? Rich got anything?
Not for me.
Okay. Any hands raised, any emails? Then we will say thank you finally and move on, close that item, move on to the final item on the agenda, which is... What would you say? Authorize the rec staff to remove the bear sculpture from Wildwood Avenue median. City manager?
Thank you, Mayor Barnes. On October fourth of 2017, the city of Riedel executed the Wildwood Avenue sculpture agreement with a artist. That agreement allowed the artist, a period of five years, to display up to four council-approved sculptures for sale, and after that period of time passed, with unsold sculptures, the sculpture would become the property of the city of Riedel. So, on October fourth, 2018, the final sculpture of a bear was placed on the northern end of Wildwood Avenue. So, now, being November of 2023, over five years have now passed since the placement of the final sculpture. Per the agreement, the sculptures are now the property of the city of Riedel. And so, Mayor Barnes has requested that an item be placed on the agenda to have specifically the bear sculpture removed, or the other remaining sculptures would remain in their place. At this time, there is no plan for replacement of a sculpture in that particular location or a plan for what to do with the current bear sculpture. However, we will place it in the corporation yard for potential future placement, potentially along the trail or other location or other dispensation of the bear.
Yeah, thank you. And I just... That bear got me crazy. It's one of the few that we haven't gotten real compliments on. It's, you know, right after we asked the artist to come and shift it a little bit, so its rear end wasn't like here, you know, Riedel. But he refused for whatever reason to do that. And so, I, it was just my hope that we can remove the bear from median and whatever happens, happens. But in the displays, of course, we have a lot of trees. We need to have space for, so that will be a good space there. So, that was why I asked the city manager to bring it to the council. So, now it's up to the council. Councilmember Woodall? Well, I never liked it, but... If somebody has a real strong feeling about it, that's one thing, but I would be fine with removing it. In fact, I would be fine with removing all stuff. Councilmember Orr?
Orr being subjective, I'm not going to pass judgment on it, but I think trees would be very nice there.
Okay. Thank you.
I'm okay, you know, moving it. It could be cool along the trail or something at some point. You know, it'll be repurposed, but yeah, we have other stuff more with a different aesthetic plan for that area, so I'm okay to get it.
Councilmember Wilson?
Yeah, I keep forgetting to bring that up, to put on agenda, which you did. Along, some of the sculptures, I thought, were pretty nice, the smaller ones. You end down the town, good. This one, it's really hard to figure out what it is. Yeah, as far as place and store it. Well, I know that art is objective, Mr. Orr, but my objective, that will be to store it. There's a lot more of its kind, which will be more fat, I want to remember, is where it belongs.
Or its bear kind.
Yeah, it doesn't depict a bear, so I'm perfectly pleased to take it out over there and store it.
Okay, thank you very much. Are there any, got anything, Rich?
What is wrong with it? That looks right. Was it long of it?
Yeah. Well, you told me all this stuff.
It looks like, this looks like a conglomerate of scrap metal. But, you know, where the other ones, you can go by and see the, you know, the hawk and the owls and owl, the cougars, the cougar, the buffalo, you know, you can figure out that he's trying to be a... He's a buffalo and he's got horns, and... But this thing here, because of the... It just looks like a bunch of scrap metal welded together, and it doesn't... You don't see a bear on this shit.
You mean, looks kinetic?
What I mean?
It looks kinetic. No, it's pretty static.
Yeah.
Well, I have locked up that there is, but still. No, I just, I just, it's got, I think it's really indiscernible to me. That's, again, that's just objective. Very indiscernible what it even is versus when I look at some of the other sculptures. I know what they are, and I think they're quite creative, particularly the buffalo. They're all pretty, they have pretty creative little character. That's my opinion.
Anything else? Thank you.
Okay.
Oh, no, I mean, that's what you're here for.
You can put it in your front yard.
Yeah, then we can get some.
Remove it. Put it on a turf, so it won't... Get your hole on it.
Any hands raised, any emails? We did get one, but send it down, we have one.
To the Riedel City Council, I don't understand why after this sculpture has been with us for such a long time, you would decide now to have it removed. It has become part of our main drag and a great representation of what was our local wildlife. We were once known for the salmon in our rivers and the bears on the California plate, for goodness sake. I, for one, do not want to see old Smokey leave us. Please vote to leave our bear friend where he is breathing people as they enter Riedel on this little section of still wild Ill River with its long-gone salmon. Thank you for giving me this time, and I hope you know you all have a great Thanksgiving. That's the only thing we need to say.
Very attractive, very welcome, written. No.
No, or just move it closer.
Exactly. I like the order idea. So, is there... Do we need a motion, or do we?
Yeah, you can just make the staff recommend a motion after the...
Okay, so we, is there a motion to authorize and direct the staff to remove the bear sculpture?
I'll make that move.
Is there a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Motion carries five zero. And that brings us to council reports. Mayor Lieutenant?
Okay, well, it is Christmas time. It's Christmas time. Saturday, December second, is our tree lighting. I think it's in the range of, what is it, 5:00 p.m.? Five to seven. That is a truck parade and a tree lighting, and Sam's will be there, and it's a really, really good time, and I highly urge people to come on out. The day before that, Friday, the first, is the Chamber of Commerce meeting at noon. I'll go to that, and there are 5,000 Christmas events happening in the general county, but that's our Riedel ones. Saturday, December second, 5:00 p.m. Thank you. That's it.
Chamber at noon on the first?
Chamber at noon on December first. It's either there or in Nick's office, the, like, archaeology building there.
One, two, and five to seven.
And that's for tree lighting, yeah. So, I think the parade will start at five, and then we're supposed to be fully done, too.
Right.
And look, it is a kids' event. It was really, really good last year. It was our first year since Sarah Reback took over that building, and she did a bang-up job. The little kids make your own ornaments, you know, kind of thing. There's always treats and tea, and it's a funny thing, so I'll be there.
All right. Be there, be square. Thank you. Councilmember Orr?
I have nothing to report. HCO wasn't able to make it to that. Had parent conferences at school. I'm hoping to get to the next one this month if they have.
All right. Thank you. Councilmember Wilson?
I don't have any. We have SWMA and RCA, but there's nothing to report for Riedel.
Thank you. Councilmember Woodall? Yes, I just want to read this because I never remember all of it, the thank people. It was in the Riedel Scotia Chamber of Commerce thread, and it's a mini-hand. It's about the lighting of the bridge. No, and mini-hand's made by work. Deep thanks to the fire department. Chief Shane Wilson and some of his crew took over decorating the bridge today, and to the Westen Alley family, who bring their experienced traffic control license and signage to professionally manage the traffic on the bridge as the lights are being put up and taken down. The tree was donated by Humboldt Redwood Company and is up on the median at Wildwood and the Columbus. Let's see. The tree lighting will be December second from five to seven PM at the Wildwood. And I just wanted to thank all those people because it was a pretty impressive project for them to do that. And what you already brought up, I drove up Wildwood on, was it Saturday? And there was Deborah and Nick in the drizzle and it was not a short project. And I want to thank you guys because that was quite something for two people to do that day. So that was it. Thank you. And another nice thing, Rich, too. I saw Fred out there. Who is it? Fred, Fred. Fred, Fred, Rich. Oh, I wondered. Yeah, that was. Yeah. And he was out on the bridge as well. Okay. He was the one holding the lights. So anyway, I think that's it. Thank you, everybody. Have a really, really wonderful Thanksgiving. I'll see you in a couple of weeks. On, is there a motion to adjourn?
So.
We will see you in a couple of weeks on December sixth at Thanksgiving.